I have three planning board members remote.
Yeah.
Yep.
We do have a corner.
We have a corner here.
Looking good.
Fifty-four. This is an alternate.
Okay.
The recording has started.
This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are meeting in the DPW conference room and we have members who are attending virtually on the Teams platform. I am calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock and our members present from my left.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Craig Cartwrights, alternates.
Staff members.
Rob Taylor.
Whitney Banker and also an alternate.
And our members who are virtual, we have Phil.
Phil from here.
Linda.
Linda Jones.
And Kate.
Kate Plumlee Stewart.
Okay. Public comments is the first, there's actually a second agenda item. Do you folks have anything that is not on the agenda? I assume you're here for a conceptual?
Yeah.
Okay, then there be no members of the public online or here in person. We go on to minutes of January eleventh.
Does anybody need copies?
I have some corrections.
Go ahead.
Line seventy-three. It said we had a health office. I think it was supposed to be health officer because he was named. And in lines one forty-one and one forty-two. Kurt and I are both in the yeas and the nays, so we need to be stricken from the yeas.
My mind was made up.
I have never said vote early, vote often.
Yeah.
Not to this board.
That's all I know. That, pardon?
I have a correction on seventy-two. First word allowance. Talking about failed septic systems. I think maybe what I said was ordinance.
Ah.
Yeah, or maybe regulation.
Didn't catch.
Regulation.
Regulation.
Yeah, state regulation can't be, can't be an ordinance because those are towns. Let me see if I have anything else. Okay, anybody else have any comments or corrections? Somebody care to make a motion?
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as amended.
Motion made. Who's going to second it?
I'll second it.
Uh, Dan, uh, Tim beat you to it, Linda, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Kate is abstaining. So we have six ayes and eight abstaining. Select Board report, Kate.
Yep, uh, so Select Board met on January seventeenth last. Decided it doesn't feel like opening. Um. So the, we got some updates on, um, there was a board of health created during the pandemic to include the Select Board, but we already have a health officer, so it's just kind of another formality. So a little update on that. Update on community power. We approved the cost share, well, we gave authorization to sign off on the cost sharing agreement, the energy portfolio, risk management, and the rates and financial reserves policies to the town manager. Took a look at the draft warrant and did decide, uh, after some discussion, to add the two proposed Conservation Commission articles. They were the ones. There was no new information and there was no plans presented in response to any of our questions. Even though there was no new information or anything else given, we decided to go ahead and put warrant articles two and four. And these are the Conservation Commissions two and four and not the actual ballot two and four. On, uh, that doesn't mean we're endorsing it. It means that we're putting it on and we'll go up for public hearings, so more to come on that. Awarded the chipper, if you remember, the chipper had a sad death. Awarded the ambulance contract, updated the transfer station fees to cover our actual expenses. So not a big jump, a couple dollars here and there. So that new fee schedule goes into effect on February first and will be up on our website. If it's not up, it should be up shortly. Took in some donations for the Lakeside Park, set a hearing, uh, for some bridge aid, which is kind of exciting. So we got a couple grants of highway money from the state. One was specifically for the roads themselves. This one is a bridge aid and the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. So it's a good chunk of change, has to be used for something that is not already in the CIP plan right now or on the budget. I can't, is it not in CIP, Dan, or is it not in the budget?
In CIP, it just wasn't scheduled. We put it in for next year to use on, uh, the Maple Street Bridge.
Yeah, so, um, so that's pretty exciting because we have a lot of older bridges in town and obviously it's a small chunk of change compared to some, how much some of these bridges cost us, but it will definitely help. And then we approved the Mascoma Loan Commitment. So that is all of the excitement from Select Board. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Kate. Backs Kate.
Welcome.
Uh, next, we have warrant hearings of which there are none. And we have conceptuals Hank and Sandy Haynes of Seven Benardi Drive. You want to, both of you or one of you come on up to the table?
Yeah, I have two chairs, I guess, can take your chairs, comfy chairs.
For the benefit of everyone, a conceptual hearing is just kind of kick around ideas. Anything that you say and anything that we say is non-binding. And, um, basically it's for you to tell us what you want to do and us to give you reaction that, um, might help improve your, whatever it is that you are wanting to do. So. Go ahead, tell us.
Yeah. I'll put the, uh, just give me a second.
Because you have people there who might not.
Yes, I've got it on electronic. I'll put it up on the screen chair for our Teams participants. We're going to share this so everybody can see it. Online. Ask the participants if they can see it, David.
Okay. Can you guys all see it?
We can all see it.
Yes.
Yeah, I can see it.
And Rob can point out, uh, with Miles Farrell.
So it's two pages. Front and back, you guys. So front is current conditions and I think the back is what they're hoping to do.
Okay, why don't you orient us with the current conditions and then?
Okay, so the, the current condition is we have, Hank and I have a lot that we share with my brother, Tom Benardi. And it's about three point two four acres. It's what's noted as B on this diagram here. And, um, this is the, the survey that was done in two thousand and two. And what we all have agreed that we would like to do with my brother is subdivide it so that we're not sharing property. We each have our own portions, if that makes sense. So, um, we have proposed a line that would go roughly where you see that driveway of Benardi Drive, right? Going down to the properties that are on Mascoma Lake. So my brother would take the north end where there's a, um, storage building, we call it the garage, and Hank and I would have the south piece. Okay? So I don't know how much more detail you want me to get into. I can dive deep or start with that.
What are the sizes of the two new lots?
Well, I don't know that they're going to be exactly fifty percent, but they're both going to be approximately one point six, one point. Somebody will probably one point six, somebody will be one point five.
Okay.
Something like that.
And you're in an R-one district?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, through along Mascoma Lake. Um, just for your benefit, if you look up here, they straighten four A. So this technically is, is frontage. When I talked to them, um, on the phone, we were talking about, and I was worried that this was like another lot and that they didn't have the frontage, but this is actually State of New Hampshire right here. This is actually road frontage. Uh, there's a couple of spots in Enfield on four and four A where the state sort of straightened it out and they still retain. This is still State of New Hampshire land, so it's still, would, to me, kept, calculated as frontage.
Part of their front.
Part of their right of way, correct.
Yeah.
So it would appear that they've got plenty of frontage for the, uh, R-one, you need seventy-five feet minimum. And you can see those numbers there's plenty. Especially with the acreage being much more than one acre.
Yeah. You know, assuming that you can get your water and septic in, I don't see any zoning issues. However, my colleagues might have some questions.
Okay.
Kurt. Just as a quick FYI, this is in the zone now that's serviced by, uh, municipal sewer. Sewer extension has happened in that vicinity. It's obviously a, it's a, what we call a forest main. So it requires a little bit more complexity for the connection. But I would advise any, you know, any use in the future, I would absolutely advise. The best way to do it, we've had four or five connections in that vicinity is with, uh, what's called horizontal or directional drilling.
Yep.
And that can save you a significant amount of money because you have to open trench and they can, they can hit a very small target from a great distance, which is impressive.
Are they required to connect or is it?
They're not required to connect.
Okay.
But if you're doing new construction, I would absolutely strongly advise, because it saves you a lot of money.
Rob is, is mechanically, is there a new technology that allows you to tap directly into a force main?
I think that when they installed the force main, they've left some stub connections for them to, um, you know, they have to, when they do the directional bore, they have to pit on each end of the directional bore.
Yes, but the force mains, you don't usually connect a house directly to a force main.
That's right.
Typically, there's a collection system and then there's a pump station that then goes and injects it into the
Exactly. Yeah, and so I think that there's, the, the infrastructure's there. We've done it in four or five other locations, I think. How's that, uh, the Wyman's? Have you met the Wyman's yet?
Yeah.
On ghetto lane.
Yep.
They built a new, like a four-bedroom house and it was great for them because they could only design a septic system about two bedrooms on the size of the lot that they had. Um, and they put in a system that's capacity rated for four or five houses to connect to and they've actually been single-handedly effective at helping a whole bunch of people connect.
Yeah.
It's a two-inch force main with a directional bore and then there is provisions. I'd have to ask Jim for more clarity, but the way that they, they tap. And you know, there's a standard design, like you said, with pump station. It's not cheap on the front end. It's, it's a much more expensive proposition than just a gravity sewer system or, or a connection would be because the pump station itself is like nine or ten thousand just for the pump.
Well, typically, the lake elevation is going to be probably a lot lower than four A anyways.
Oh, yeah.
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 Right.
But again, the, the improvement in, you know, you can have more bedrooms.
Right.
Then the, the site would normally be able to support because of, uh, a regular septic system would have to be limited, you know?
Okay.
So it's something to think about, but
Okay.
Like, like I said, you're not required to connect. That's the interesting thing about state law is that if you're on a gravity sewer system, you, you have to connect. Uh, and if it's force main, you don't have to. But we're trying, I mean, as a, as a municipality, we're trying everything we can, both policy and encouragement or even with financing, the Slummen have now offered to help, um, you know, you can split up some payments over a couple of years kind of and trying to make it more advantageous because it really is, I mean, it's water quality for the lake.
Exactly.
And everybody that connects is one less potential contamination for the lake, so.
Kurt, you had a question?
Yeah, um, I'm counting up, unless I'm missing something there, five lots being accessed from that one driveway?
Uh, there's the, the three where it's C, you see, see the C?
Yeah.
A, and then what now is said is new owned by Haynes Family Rapidable Trust. So those three residences.
But the two, plus the two new ones.
That would be the two new ones, yes. Currently one, yeah. So four now, five in the future.
Good catch, Kurt.
And what is the condition of Benardi Drive?
Saved.
Is it, um, the town standards?
Yeah, my understanding is yes, because when we built our home in
It's just something that's going to have to be purified.
Right.
So clarify.
Yeah, clarify that it's, that that, that Benardi Drive is to stop town standards because of the number of driveways coming off of there.
Yeah, the town renovation is, um, um, you can access two two lots with a driveway, essentially a shared driveway.
Okay.
But once you get to three or more, then it needs to be sort of to the town spec. Now conceivably, they could add a new curb cut for the two new lots.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be less
There's also, there's also Bassie Lane.
Is that this one down to the?
Yeah, Bassie Lane is where the cemetery is.
Right, but you still have the two lots in the northeast corner there. Um, that'll be, still going to be, unless you extend Bassie Lane, you're still going to end up with four lots, no matter how you cut, splice it, at a minimum.
Just what there are now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, unless, unless they get a, a curb cut for the new lot, the new north lot, they could get a curb cut from the state for that. That would take care of the issue because then the other one could go in off of Bassie Lane. You don't have to use it, you just have to show you've got it.
But I mean, leave, right, leave the old Bassie Lane, that's just
Yeah.
So would we be able to, with whatever investigation and all of that, create another off of Benardi Drive?
If you could get, if you can get state approval for the, for the curb cut.
Yeah, so it's, because four A is, is a state road.
Right.
So we don't control, uh, what, what's called a driveway access or curb cut. The, that's a permit you get from the State of New Hampshire. So you want to talk to their, they have a, a facility on X to sixteen. It's called District Two Headquarters. Uh, they have a couple of engineers there. You can certainly reach out to them and talk.
Yeah.
They, you know, they can cut, they, sometimes they try to play hardball and say, oh, no, we don't want to give you that, but you got good straight road there with good visibility, both directions. They sort of have to let you. They try to keep it to a minimum. They don't want, you know, driveway, 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 driveway. But I mean, if it's your land and, and you need access.
Yeah.
You need access, you know?
So is this a town road? I mean, is it currently plowed by the town or?
Benardi Drive?
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
Right.
One of several in town.
Tell me about it.
You know all that?
It would make sense before approaching the state though to talk to Jim and have had his team do that look so that they're not doing extra work, right? Because what, what Benardi Lay, Benardi Drive looks like from the road, it's a pretty decent, you know what I mean? I'm just saying like a general quick unprofessional glance. It's a lot better than some of them. So I think have Jim take a look so you don't have to tangle with the state unless you want to. And then if, if for some reason it doesn't work or it needs to be upgraded and it's outside of what you want to do, then, then go the state route. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And the town specs are going to dictate things like base depth of gravel.
Okay.
Width of the travel way, drainage. What we're basically trying to do, I mean, in the old days, people built lots of private roads all over, especially on Mascoma Lake. And what we're trying to get away from as a planning organization is the poorly maintained private road. Because what we have is, we have a public interest in being able to access your property. If you have a fire, we have fire trucks that need to get there. If you have an incident, ambulance needs to get there, cops, and public services in general. So we really want to have roads that are reliable, you know, that are, you know, and there's also some agreements that some people make when they do private roads about maintaining it in the wintertime. Because you know, some of those roads on Mascoma, nobody lives down there in the wintertime.
Right.
Completely quiet.
Right.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, somebody will say, oh, I'm going to live there year-round. And so it's like, okay, now you got to maintain it. And we've got a bunch of those roads. One of our members lives on one. And it can be difficult because you do have residents that don't live there in the, in the wintertime. They don't want to have to pay for the maintenance that they're not sort of taking advantage of.
Yep.
But, uh, again, we really have an interest from the public standpoint that the roads are decent.
Yeah.
You know, the fire trucks are big rigs now. They're not little tiny fire trucks. They're big.
They've all been there.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But so, yeah, I can help you.
To get there too.
I can help you guys talk to the Public Works Director, his office right here.
Okay.
We can certainly talk about it, talk about your options.
And I think the other thing that you will need, uh, if you continue to use the Benardi Drive road for the four lots, you will need a driveway maintenance agreement from all four law owners.
Yeah, that kind of goes into the new deed, so the new
Okay, so like, because in the existing deeds, they all say how it's supposed to be maintained and expenses shared.
Yep.
So is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
If you've got that already, then you just have to update it and reallocate it because now you have four lots rather than three.
Right, okay, okay, okay.
Kurt? One other thing, I have no idea if it even pertains to this project or not, but I do recall a number of years ago, and this was, this was done in O two, so it may, may not be this one. It was a subdivision done on Route Four A along Mascoma where the road was, we agreed, planning board agreed that the road would be less than fifty feet wide, the right of way. Even though that was the standard. And part of the agreement was that the plaque would be stamped, not the town specs. They didn't want to, the lots were too small. They didn't want to do a right of way of fifty feet. Even though your travel portion is like twenty-five, thirty feet.
Yeah.
You need that extra space for snow removal and utilities and things like that.
Okay.
So that's why it's sort of a standard fifty-foot wide right of way. And this particular one, is it like a three-lot subdivision or something like that? And we said, okay, make it forty-eight or whatever they wanted. Let's stamp it as such. Now, if you're, like I said, I don't even know if it's this project. It was a number of years ago.
Yeah.
And it just sort of like, remember that happening.
Okay.
So that, that would be on the original flats.
Some pass.
Would be noted there.
Way back to the original?
Public Works Director would be able to find out if, if it's your property or not.
Okay, okay.
Good, anything else?
I have one more thing, which came to this. So my brother has asked us, he owns Lot A, so that the middle one there. He has asked us if we would be willing to do, it's called a boundary line adjustment, I think? To move the line six feet into our property. I don't know if you can see on here, his driveway literally touches the property line. So we are willing to be nice siblings and accommodate that subject to a survey that shows us where that line would be.
So I would say you could do it all at the same time as the others.
Okay.
Be on one application.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't make a lot less than an acre.
Exactly.
When it's finished.
It will, yeah, we ran those numbers.
It's going to make, how big is A? Well, it doesn't make a difference if, if it's, if A is less than, it's getting more, so it's making more conforming. So.
Right.
That's not, that's not relevant. Yeah.
Yes.
So yeah, you know, you'll probably have a surveyor who's going to lay all this out for you and you and your brother agree where the new boundary is and the surveyor puts pins in the appropriate place and draws it on his flat and we do it all in one hearing.
Okay, perfect.
Follow the subdivision and boundary line adjustment.
All in one. And there's a form we have to?
There's an app, there'll be an application. I'll walk you through that.
Okay.
But I think the next call, I think maybe if you want to call anytime in the next couple of days, I can get you in touch with Jim Taylor and Public Works Director. More of the logistics about the, about the road.
Great. All right.
Okay, well, thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
It looks like a pretty reasonable project and
Hope so, yeah.
We'll see you again when you're ready for the formal hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe, everybody.
Yeah. You too.
We'll just follow the plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Just wait for one to leave.
And hope he's going where you live.
Yeah, just turn up this driveway for me. You can turn around here.
Okay, old business. We have what will hopefully be the final version of the explanations for the warrant articles. Shall we go over these?
Yeah, let me bring those up.
Okay.
Send here.
While you're doing this, I'm going to ask, um, we really need the old business to be listed out from previous meetings. Should be in the agenda.
It should be in, it is.
It was in one previous, I think, but.
We will try to do better.
That's all anyone can do.
Okay. Try to do better? We will do that.
We're always trying to do better.
Okay, we will do better. And the more you bring our shortcomings to our attention, the better we will do. All right. All right, put that up on the screen.
Here we go. This is the document I think you guys all got yesterday.
Yep.
And I do have copies. If you, I think all of you have copies over here and I'm sharing it with our teams.
Yeah.
So we just, obviously just be the part in blue that we're discussing, the part in black we've already approved and definitely knows. That sort of thing.
So in previous times, board meetings, and I know this Lake Board has done this, I'm pretty sure we have also, we put down the board votes.
Yeah.
In the, in the explanation.
Yeah, that hasn't been integrated into this document yet.
That's on the article.
But it will be.
The explanation, right? It's below the article. I think you're right. Yeah, so it goes on the ballot.
It goes on the ballot. So it'll, it'll be in the, are you in favor of and?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think it would be right at the conclusion of this, right?
It's like the last line on it.
Down here of this.
And the Budget Committee voted X.
Right.
It's in bold. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They they add that, I think at the town office once when they put everything together.
Okay.
If I could make a general comment, so what we, Dave and I came to a agreement on about this was that where you may remember in the previous meeting, I was suggesting we need to state why it is we're wanting to advance this 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 amendment. And I think that it got lukewarm reception. Certainly wasn't unanimous that that's something we should do. So we removed anything that anything like that, anything that said, this is why we are doing this. So this is strictly an explanation of what your vote will accomplish. And I think if we just leave it at this just like this, and I'm certainly willing to do that. If we want to just throw it out there and see what the voters think of it and not try to explain it at all, then we can do that. Or we could make some attempt to further explain this through a completely separate document, something that we could hand out, something we could put on our website. Throw up on the listserv that explains why the planning board is advancing these articles.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing is if you if you leave it just this way, and maybe we have to, right? But if you leave it this way, there there's no, there's no explanation of of like like Tim said, of why would you ever vote yes on this? It doesn't talk about the, you know, the huge need for additional dwelling units within the town. And, you know, at first look, you might just say, no, I don't want any more development in it. No. As opposed to trying to explain why it's so important, why we feel it's so important.
But all you really want to achieve is for the thing to pass.
Right.
So the folks that might vote no because they don't understand it could be far outweighed by the folks who say, yeah, this is fine. And we never needed to do any.
Yeah, you don't. Could hurt you is what you're saying.
I could see doing listserv posts. I don't think I don't think you want to put it on the web, the town website. Because then that becomes
Yeah, politics.
Almost like electioneering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You put it on the town website. I can see a listserv post that's non, you know. Anybody could stick it out there on listserv.
Yeah.
David could put it on listserv. David's not on listserv.
I'm not on listserv. I I I might have to go on though for this. I would.
Would you believe that in in my former town, which I don't recommend anybody moving to the state of Massachusetts, they have what Tim describes on the ballot, both for and against. So somebody writes a a pro, a yes, and somebody writes a no. And and God knows how that is cleared as accurate and, you know, all that sort of stuff. But what it does is that you you get a very good understanding of what you're voting for, whereas this to Tim's point is like
Right.
Not so much.
Well, in in very frugal New Hampshire.
Yeah.
We have been told that printing is expensive. And and the town wants to keep the
Well, that's that's.
The explanations
That's.
As succinct as possible.
Silly reason.
I'm just stating the town's position.
Yeah, silly reason, pound foolish, penny wise, pound foolish. But I think
But I I.
To to Dan's point, you know, this is probably legacy stuff that we have not done that in the past and we're certainly not going to start today. So just a point of interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
I think a listserv post would be appropriate.
Right, and the people that aren't that are not on the list serve probably know somebody who is. And can ask, and the word just gets out pretty quickly, just surprise from that. I mean, I led it to the editor as the old fashioned way. I stopped reading the rally news a long time ago. Well, at least stop buying the rally news, I should say. Wasn't worth the money to me. But that's the other way too.
Well, okay, but consider this. Are we talking about a piece that represents the feeling of the board, something that we agree collectively is our reasoning for putting this amendment, any of them.
I would leave it as as as, which I've done in the past, and never, nobody's totally messed up. I did it as a planning board member. This is why I voted for this article or opposed this article, but it was always I.
Yeah.
I mean, I was straight. I am a planning board member, but.
Yeah, I think that's clean.
But I am speaking as a as an individual, and this is why I voted this way. Type of thing.
That makes sense.
And I think that's a really good point, Kurt, because we have certain individuals in this town who run crying to the town manager every time someone, even when you say it's your individual opinion. They claim they're trying to create a public forum. And so I think it's super important that each time we say, like, I am posting this in my individual capacity. It also keeps us square with the Attorney's General Office. Because, you know, if you do anything that looks like electioneering with town tax dollars, we get in trouble. And I'm not saying you, but just in general, any of us.
Yeah.
It's a pretty fine line, but I think it's a really important line.
And I mean, I was very vocal with the village plan alternative when it was being proposed a number of years ago. The original ones, and Paul Mariski knew the laws. And he didn't like me, but he didn't try to sue me either, so.
Kurt, when you were talking, you know, a minute ago, you were referring to your comments that you've made as why I voted for past tense. Have you ever made comments in advance of a vote as?
No, that was always after the public hearings.
Right.
Type of thing, after the votes were taken.
Yeah, after the planning board votes were taken.
Exactly.
Yes, yeah. Was published or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was after the one after the warrants were published.
Okay.
Is when I
Exactly.
Started stating my opinions.
Any feedback from whatever you submitted?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, people were, you know, glad that I did that, and other people were really mad at me for.
Right, and we had quite an exchange last year about the village plan. On that very subject.
Yeah.
Yeah. Drawing. Now, if you'll remember.
I remember that well.
The board, the planning board actually had their reasoning on the warrant. It was it was on, it was part of the explanation. And but using what we just talked about as as being the principle we're going to go forward with here. The next article, scroll down to that one. Change it for right. There were two or three bullet points under this that was attempted to explain the reasoning. So we removed those, just in keeping with the same consistency.
Consistent.
So this is what we could write, which seems seems to be very simply, this is what this is what your vote will accomplish.
I think factually speaking, you could, and I don't know if you want to do this, but I'm saying that you could say a yes vote would increase density in the downtown area that is on sewer. Because that would be factual, right? It wouldn't be a compelling argument one way or another. Some people will feel yay, and some people will be like, be concerned. Because we've been talking a lot about density, and I think the village plan, not the village plan, oh my gosh, master plan addresses that. But I don't know if you want to bother with it or not.
I I wouldn't say not because you can easily easily slip over that line and then all of a sudden you're you're violating the principle we just said we want to follow.
Well, I wouldn't say so because telling someone the truth that if you vote this way increases the density is a fact. It's not a compelling because if it was a compelling argument one way or another, I would say you would be slipping over the line. But it isn't a compelling argument one way or another because there's an even chance that someone's gonna go one way or the other without saying it's favorable to, right? Because you aren't saying it's favorable to.
Yeah, and and so really the question is, just saying that it increases density, is that does that add anything to these explanations?
I don't know if it does.
Already implied or that we wouldn't otherwise describe it as a better document.
The only change I might make is on the no side in that it's gonna, it should say a no vote will keep the subject lot size at a half acre, and you'll have to have both water and sewer. Because right now, it'll keep it at water and sewer.
Okay, that's a, that is really, that is factually the.
That is factually true.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's a one, it's a one half, it's not a lot size out of one half acre, it is a one half acre minimum. Right? That's a very important word to not lose from that explanation because.
Rob, we need a little wordsmithing up there.
Okay, tell me which one.
Last sentence, last word, take it period away. And try we'll keep the subject lot size at one half acre minimum with town water and sewer. Or with municipal water.
What's the actual, what's the actual? Just use the wording from the actual ordinance as it is. One half acre for our dwelling where municipal water and sewer. No, because in the
You get big.
Okay, right, because that's being scratched too. So, yeah. Just, yeah, just copy what's on the.
Just just one half acre minimum and with both water and sewer.
Minimum needs to be respelled.
Only has.
Go with the U.
Not the U.
Go with the U. It'll be, you should say municipal water and sewer.
Rob.
Yeah, municipal.
Minimum.
It's sewer, not sewer.
Give the guy a break. That should do it.
That's auto correct, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where we have Whitney for. Thanks all these.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody happy with that one?
Are we happy with the front, the first one? We didn't really vote on it.
Yeah. Need to go back?
Phil Vermeer is happy.
Yeah, everybody else?
Yeah.
Agree?
Yeah. I always look at the no to make sure that the no is, the no is true too.
Linda, are you still with us? Are you happy?
Oops. How about if I unmute? I'm happy. I had to unmute.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you happy? With the, yes, okay. Please. One margarita down. Okay, next one is the principal dwelling language.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. We're just fixing a contradiction.
Yep.
Yep. Everybody good?
Yep.
People online, you good?
Yes.
Bill? Yes.
Is Kate still with us?
It gave you the thumbs up.
Okay.
Just fixing to correct spelling or something, and you still get a no vote because it's zoning?
Next one. Conservation Commission.
Now, this is where they're gonna, yeah, my feeling is legal is gonna throw this out. They're going to say, no, you can't say that.
Why?
It says, because it says prime wetlands contribute to flood control of water, ground recharge, shoreline. Yes, no, where, oh, it is important that these prime wetlands be left in their natural state with no development closer than one hundred feet.
Yeah.
That's that's making a statement that
So let's, so let's let legal pick it out.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean.
Yeah, this is the exact language that the Conservation Commission approved at their meeting. It's cut and paste from what Dr. Thice
Yeah.
Said to me. So if it's not good, we'll let legal.
Right. I agree.
I agree with that approach.
Yeah. Yeah, because all you really need is the last thing there.
Yeah.
A yes vote, men will increase the setback from fifty feet to a hundred feet. A no will leave it at fifty feet.
And the Conservation Commission can do.
They can do with what they want.
They're gonna have an educational session.
Sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them.
Let them carry them all, basically.
Yeah.
But we're the ones responsible for the wording at the end of the day, right?
I don't think so, not on, not on something that we
Explanations?
Not on something that we
We did not bring forward.
On explanation, I mean, we're stuck with the warrant article itself.
Right.
Well, that's not, we're on the explanation, right?
We're on the explanation.
Narrative.
Narrative.
As long as we're not the owners of the narrative, because I wouldn't want to intentionally set something on like that.
We're not, we're not the owners because the Conservation Commission brought the warrant article to us.
And could you attribute that middle paragraph to the conservation?
I was gonna say, yeah.
I would, I would, yes, according to the conservation.
According to the Conservation Commission.
And then legal will kick it out.
Yeah, and then let them kick it out.
Well, it originally said something to the effect
Oh, yeah.
That this article was requested by the Conservation Commission.
Right above it.
And here is their reason.
Yeah, right.
It starts off and feels the Conservation Commission.
Requested the planning. Right.
I think that's enough.
Yeah.
I I like, I think it was Dan's idea of say, according to the Conservation Commission.
At the beginning of the second.
Right above that second paragraph.
Yeah, I still agree that these that should be there.
But by according to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it, is it not true, though, that they persuaded this board to vote to advance this this amendment to be
To the warrant.
For the warrant. And and you're gonna, and the bottom of this thing, it's gonna say
But we voted.
Planning board recommends this.
Right, it's gonna say that on the article.
We voted. So does that not imply that this wording is something that we agree?
The article.
Yes, the article.
The article is.
We agreed to the article.
Put it on the on the warrant, what we agreed to.
Right, because we we recommended it.
Did you guys recommend this at the last meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Because the narrative goes in a separate portion of the town report also.
Right.
So they're not even on the same page.
No. And the only place it shows is on ballot, really.
Right, just
Whether we recommend.
Just article X is on the ballot.
Right.
Explanation is in the town report on a completely separate page.
On a completely separate section.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I I I I know that, but I I really think I really think we own this line. Now having the town legal say that, hey, you can't put that in there, that center paragraph.
Right.
Is fine, but if he says that's okay, that suggests a whole different approach than maybe next year. Personally, I would, I would leave out that center paragraph, just explaining to the Conservation Commission, and there's a similar one to the Heritage Commission. That we just can't put that in there according to our legal understanding of what's allowed. They'll have to do their electioneering in a different manner.
I I think that would be a good argument if we had told that to them upfront, and I can see some pushback. Uh, if we suddenly change course and tell them that we can't put their language in.
It's not a big enough hill for me to die on.
Right.
Should, should we leave it as amended and let legal take care of it?
Yes. And when it comes down to it, I think, I think when it comes down to it, we really thought it was originally 100 feet.
Yeah.
And we're putting it back to where we thought it was.
Yeah.
True, very true. And most of us, if we're engaged on this topic by, by someone who wants to ask questions about it, we're gonna say, you need to go see the Conservation.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, talked around, let's, yeah. See a warrant, so.
Yeah. Right. Yes.
Okay, next is Heritage. The only addition would be to have the wording similar to the Enfield one where first line, Enfield Heritage Commission requested the planning board to place this proposed amendment on the warrants.
Right.
Just so the language is similar.
After the word amendment, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be there.
Yeah.
Just on the side, that would not do that.
And I think you should probably do.
On the.
On the warrant.
Right there.
Where your cursor is, or was, after the word amendment.
First line.
First line. You meant that, yeah, put it there.
Yeah, comma, or whatever. What was I saying? Yeah, proposing.
On the warrant.
Places proposed.
No comma, no comma, just a straight on the, on the warrant.
Yep.
And I think to be uniform with what you did in the last one, you should have it say according to the Heritage Commission, right? So that you're giving uniform explanations with the same kind of logic.
Yeah.
And that really gives focus on the people who have the expertise, so that when people have questions, hopefully, they'll go back to them. And if it gets tossed by legal, then well, you know, we'll deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Works for me. Scroll down a little, Rob.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Rob, the actual wording of that amendment, uh, somehow, we didn't get, because I know we added the tax map plot numbers.
I'll make sure they go.
Yeah, that's not the one to use right there.
This one, I know you had asked if there was a specific RSA or piece of legislation. I don't, I, we, we never got that. It was just by request of the Office of Planning Development staff. They did a review of our ordinance, and they sent the requested changes to us. So there's no legislative kicker for this.
Okay, so but we have to make, is it true that we have to make the changes, required to make the changes in order for people to get flood insurance?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
So that first sentence needs to be reworded in slightly.
It's the Office of Planning and Development, who are the state administrators of the federal program. So direct contact with us is state personnel.
How about if we say the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development has reviewed the latest FEMA regulations.
And require.
And requires the following changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, uh, New Hampshire Office of Planning is not requiring it, FEMA is requiring it.
Um, and I think.
They just reviewed, they just made us aware that there's a problem.
Beamer is the one that says, if you don't make the change, you don't get your insurance.
So, and it's not difficult to obtain flood insurance. I think a no vote would jeopardize the ability of certain property owners to obtain flood insurance. Because I think difficult implies not impossible. Um, I worry about using the word difficult. I mean, I'm a challenge-accepted kind of gal, so you tell me it's difficult, I'm like, all right.
I agree with the Kate, because I, I toyed with that same word change.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I'm not, I understand why. I mean, it, it would be a difficult situation, but you're, the likely outcome is not great. I think if you say jeopardize your ability, then you're like, you know what, you gamble, you do you. We're not making you a promise that you could or not. But, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
Flood insurance is a challenge anyways.
Rob, I think you could simplify the first part. Just eliminate and has recommended changes to. Well, well, hang on, don't, don't hit that. Well, you can undo, but wait just a second, just a second.
Okay.
Latest FEMA, review the latest FEMA.
Should say FEMA.
Regulations.
FEMA floodplain.
Has recommended changes, uh, take out that center, where you get, yeah, right, from right there to the right, over to where it says Enfield again. There you go. Uh, wait a minute.
Hey, I like the landowners we have. I don't want any changes to them.
And it's not, it changes to Enfield, all landowners to continue.
What changes to Enfield zoning ordinance or, or floodplain development ordinance?
But, yeah, what's the name of the formalized ordinance? Is that what it is?
Yeah. And all landowners to.
All landowners to continue to obtain and maintain flood insurance.
Now, we're getting pretty close.
Yeah.
Can, can you put FEMA floodplain regulations?
Yeah, because FEMA has lots of regulations.
Yeah. You just think FEMA is saying.
That doesn't need to be capitalized, it's not a, it's not a, obliquely referring to. Enfield apostrophe S, and that's fine, that's fine, that works. And then we're gonna change difficult to, uh.
Impossible.
How about problematic?
Well.
No, because I can just, I think it's like, you do it, or you don't, you don't get funded, and the discussion. Especially where FEMA's been.
Close to saying possible.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cracking on because of the cost.
So you, you'd use the word impossible.
Impossible is the word.
Yeah, do we know that is in the case?
Can we highlight it and ask, specifically ask legal to help us in that spot? Is that a?
Yeah.
Reasonable?
Yeah.
Because I, I, I mean, I think we all have very good intentions, and none of us are lawyers, and I, the more we work on it, the more I think everybody's language has got possibilities.
Yeah.
Well, less likely.
And legal may say, legal may say nothing's impossible. I think it's very improbable.
Well, it could be, it could be that your rates are just higher if you're.
Exactly.
Your ordinance, so.
Right.
You can get it, but it's gonna cost you more.
But I know that's gonna put you in a different.
Yeah, that's very possible, yeah.
It's gonna put you in a different group.
Right, yeah, yeah, individual versus group rates.
Right.
Like medical insurance.
Okay, well, I'll consult.
Um, yeah. Folks, on the second line, should we say, and has recommended the following changes, which we kind of say in, in other explanations.
Sure.
Sure.
Where's that?
Second line.
Recommended.
Say the following changes.
Yeah.
Have you guys figured out if that entire section has to be printed on the ballot, or is it, uh?
I just don't think we'd have to put the whole thing down.
Okay.
We can put it up on the wall. It would be more like, are you in favor of the changes as shown in the town report?
Look on the wall. Look up, folks.
Well, they'll be there.
It'll be in the town report. It just won't be on the ballot.
Okay. Um, other old business?
Yes, um, we, I think, we asked, did we come to consensus to request the Budget Committee Board to select one to adjust the the $25,000 request to be either or zoning or master?
Yes, I think we came to a consensus to do it.
And it was done.
It was, they brought it to budget and budget, we just changed the wording.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna, it'll go to the select board, because it's gonna be use of, um, designated funds.
Yep.
But it's, it's for zoning or planning uses.
Okay.
And then we'll be voting on that February, something like, at our public, at budgets public hearing. And then Kurt had a public handout piece that we can either talk about tonight, or we could just leave it on the old business.
I, I think that's something that's more appropriately discussed when we do our annual review of policies and procedures. I think that would be a great time to do it.
Yeah. Subsequent to the town meeting vote, when we have, uh, basically the new year, there's a, there's a meeting, well, one of your meetings is a reorganization, you'll elect a chair, and you can review your rules and procedure and policies.
Right, I think that's a good time to do that.
I don't.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the ideal.
Yeah, because we adopt it for the year.
Yeah, it fits in there, and, uh, it's, it's a, it's a good basic document. I think a lot of what's in there, we already have in our policies and procedures, but I, you know, I think a careful read-through, um, would be helpful, and if there's some things in there that we can extract and put into our policies and procedures, um, I think we should do it. Yeah, I mean, it was partially for just us to keep us on track, but also was main, my main focus was when someone walks through the door for the first time saying, and we're having an application with a big application with a lot of rebutters showing up, and they've never been to a planning board meeting before, it's like, what's going on? Oh, so you're having these votes, and they're going like, what are you voting on?
Yeah, I think it could be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I looked at it, Kurt, and I, I had a thought, um, that kind of goes along with a conversation I'd had with Ed in general for committees, which is, we could probably help educate the public a little bit better, um, be it on our website, like, tell them about what we do and a little bit about the process, and this might be something that could also be a website-type tool, right? So like a handout-type card, where it might not have to be a policy, but it might be a tool, and a tool could come operationally. Like, it's not that you guys can't weigh in on it, but operationally, Rob and Ed could choose to include a tool, like, on the website and have a handout for their office to use to help people out, uh, so I thought, and that's an interesting approach as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's good. Yeah, I mean, but every board, I mean, the planning board and the zoning board have a very similar process of conducting the business section, uh, where the select board is a little bit different, budget committee's different, so. But just, yeah, which is something that's differentiates between the different boards would be helpful, too.
I'm a big fan of flow charts. I want a flow chart for everything. I like pictures.
Okay, so. Not everybody reads flow charts, right?
It's got an arrow, it has a decision tree. Do you do this, or do you do this? It's super easy.
Okay. So, um.
Somebody's at home.
Only, only you have a master's degree in flow charting.
Yeah, see, the best ones are when, when they go with circular loop.
No, that, never mind, I'm not, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we, uh, in keeping with our, our thoughts before about how we're, we're gonna have a permanent agenda item to talk about, so the zoning, right? Which subsequently, I think we should probably call it the land use regulations, right?
Right.
Um, where we, where would we fit that in between old, new business, after new business, after conceptuals?
Well, we, we would, we would do that at our monthly work sessions, which would not include conceptuals and hearings.
In theory. Okay, is that, that's not tonight?
No. That is first meeting of the month.
Okay, there are occasionally meetings like tonight where it's eight o'clock, and we bothered to come out here in the middle of a snowstorm, we're here, it's not gonna get any worse in the next hour or so. I'm not saying tonight, but if it were, it's just a permanent item on, we could either take it up or not, depending on circumstances. We ended early, pick up the discussion, keep moving this thing forward, keep the momentum up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but have a dedicated.
We know the first meeting of the month, we're gonna talk about it.
It just, that is standard.
And we could, we could keep it on the agenda for the second one, and if there's time, you do it, and if there's not, you table the discussion.
Yeah, so I, I can see that appearing before old business.
Yeah.
That sort of ties into my comment on new business, but, oh, finish all of it.
I'm done.
All right, where's your comment on new business? Well, because, um, yeah, I was thinking about, because we've been running late on most of the meetings, and they were like agenda hearings, for whatever reason. But when we start getting into the more complicated ones, um, it's just gonna eat up a lot of time. And if there's different boards, we have different start times, it's no standard. So I was wondering if, I mean, if traditionally, we've been seven o'clock as long as I've been on the board, and I never had a problem with that, and I still don't. But if we did a 6:30 starts, and we go through the business section, that's just planning board, board stuff, the minutes, select boards, um, old business discussion, and, and having that a seven o'clock is when we start public hearing time, but not before. Based, you know, they do like the select boards, when they do their official public hearing.
When does the select board start?
Six.
Six.
We start at six, and we stopped moving the public hearing around. Um, at one point, we were doing it, I think, at like 6:30, and it just makes sense to kind of do them on the agenda. Um, you don't need to keep, because otherwise, we were trying to like pull things forward, and it got very confusing, so we stopped.
For me, the six o'clock is, do you eat dinner before or after type of deal? We do the Johnson property at five.
Right, yeah.
And then you're done at seven. I know, most times, I don't know. I don't care, I don't have a preference, actually.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if the people that come for the hearings have a problem with the seven o'clock start time, that doesn't seem to be, it's more of a motivational, if they want to be there, they'll be here.
And I don't like, I don't like it getting to be nine o'clock, and we're engaged in a really a really serious discussion, and we're beginning to be sleepy and a little.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm on three. One starts at six, one starts at 6:30, one starts at seven. Budget starts at 6:30, because people can get dinner and still get here for a 6:30 meeting.
That's why I'm suggesting 6:30.
Yeah.
And we do that first half hour, where we just go through the miscellaneous stuff that the public really doesn't care about. Um, and.
And we still post the public hearing though, for 6:30.
Right, right, we're gonna be here at 6:30.
Around till seven o'clock, if we don't have.
But the concept, well, even conceptuals could be.
They could be anytime.
If they're here.
Right.
We can have them. If it's like 10, 10 to 7, and they're here, okay, we'll hear what you have to say. But any formal public hearing will be seven o'clock start time.
Or do we need to do that?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Because, because if we don't have, I mean, sometimes it can take us a half an hour to review minutes, and sometimes we can get through it in five.
Right, because all we're talking about is reviewing, reviewing minutes and the select board report, because then it's public hearing time.
And, and, you know, old business, you know, so like. And, and you know, old business, you know, sort of like, well, type of thing, but just a little bit, the things that the public don't, like I said, that don't really care to hear.
On the minutes, I think we could all, you know, and I think every one of us could do a little bit. And sometimes I nail it and sometimes I don't. But if we see something in advance, we could, you can't email everybody, right? But you could give it to Rob and David. And the minute taker. And that might help us so that it's a little bit more like, you don't have to look up and down the pages many times or those folks don't. Um, I don't, you know, you still have to bang, bang, bang.
At the open hearing.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so that's really.
Um, you know, I don't have any objection to starting at six-thirty. Um, we should keep in mind that the town calendar for the next eleven months has us starting at seven.
Well, and I think we keep it seven.
I don't know if that would be a problem.
Well, yeah.
If it's already been in, unless that gets updated.
Calendar at seven?
I can make that change in five seconds.
Yeah, but that's, that's a reference. I mean, it's not, it's, it's.
No, it's not. That's, that's official. Seven o'clock is official.
It is, but it changes. A lot of committees change. I prefer to go official like you're saying, Dan. But I see a lot of committees bounce around and it makes my head go a little spinny.
Right.
And that's what I'm suggesting, the seven o'clock for the pub, the public portion, the more public portion.
Is there any reason we couldn't post a work session if we really needed a work session? Right, to do some of the work that might not be super exciting, that isn't gonna be going on to the warrant, but is like future type work? Is there a reason we couldn't post it earlier? Like it, so it's two part, like you're saying, but the body of the regular kind of meetings that we always hold start at seven?
That's what I want.
Well, just what, what we want to do, and we were successful at doing it for a while, was to have our work sessions
Right.
with no hearing scheduled. And then on the second meeting of the month, we would have our hearings and any work that needed to be done. And I, I think it's just a question of scheduling the hearings according to our schedule. And I, I know that Rob wants to get these people who come to us um, in and out as quickly as possible, but I, I think we have, um, a, I don't know what you'd call it. We have an obligation as a board to set aside time to do board work and not do public hearings and.
And vice versa, right?
Yeah, and, 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 and the idea, you know, we, we started this a few years ago and it worked. At least I thought it worked.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a clock that was in there from when we get an application as to when we have to hold a hearing.
In three days.
How long is that?
Thirty days.
Thirty?
Right, I mean, could plan by law, we have to meet once a month.
Oh, I know, but I mean, for, for, so that if somebody gets something in, not in time for the.
Through the holidays from Thanksgiving through Christmas, because we didn't have our second meeting in a couple of cases and so definitely get off course, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Try to get it back on course now.
Yeah.
Work session, first meeting, hearing second.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that and we start our meetings at six-thirty, starting in February?
Is that what you guys want to do?
Keep them lit up and.
I, I think we should do six-thirty.
Six-thirty, yeah. You're right.
You know, that way we can go later.
We're ready to doze at nine.
Well, nine is my dinner time.
Meetings as short as possible, right? I mean,
Oh, yeah.
You, you're better for an hour and a half than you are for three hours, right?
Right, absolutely, yeah.
And, and the key to that, or part of the key to that, I think is when conversations start to get a little wonky. You know, you gotta throw the gavel down and sit back on track. And then we need to discipline ourselves, not all the chit chat that we do can eat up time.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
Just as guilty as anybody.
Yeah.
Well.
There's a certain amount of relatability though. I think that's important that you guys have, um, and we all have when we do chit chat to make sure that we're, at the end of the day, we are humans and we work together. So it'll be hard on yourselves.
I mean, I, I think like you're referring to, and it happens, not often, but it happens enough that someone from the audience will just go off on some tangent and go on for five minutes, ten, and it's like, wait a minute, what's, you're not even on, you're not even on topic anymore.
Right, and the other thing is when the public portion is closed, it's closed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unless, unless the board has come up with another question that we need their response.
No, no. But that wouldn't be from the public. Any question would go to the applicant.
Yeah.
Right, right. The applicant should always be able to answer a question from the board.
Right, but, and the, the questions from the public actually go to the chairman. They don't go to the applicant.
Yeah.
And I, I, I know we're talking about the gravel pit hearing as, as an example. And we, and you know, we closed, we closed the hearing. There was a question from one of the leaders. I, I perceived him as being.
Yeah.
Um, of, he wasn't the applicant, he was the opposing landowner.
Yeah, yeah.
Representing that. So I, I felt it was incumbent upon us to get the full picture by asking him to expand.
Right, I mean, I'm, I don't have a problem with closing the public hearing. I mean, especially with the ZBA does that on a formal basis. Um, but I, I have a problem when you close it too early and we still are talking amongst ourselves and a question comes up. We ask the applicant, he answers it, and then the member of the public goes like, whoa, wait a minute, I didn't even think of that. You know, it's like.
I know.
You know, so it's like, I think we just don't formally close it until we're actually ready to do the final voting type of thing.
But to Dave's point, if, if even after having done that, he sees a situation, a conversation developing where, uh, we do need someone in the audience who's representing some entity to, to weigh in, then you should feel free to.
Right, but it's gotta come in that direction and not this direction.
Right.
That's why I'm just saying, you don't make the formal closure until we're ready to sit down and make, take the vote, make the motion. We'll make, someone's gonna propose a motion. And then we, and then you close.
But if.
Prior to that happening.
Devil's advocate here, if we keep the hearing open and we're talking amongst ourselves, then I would have to acknowledge somebody from the public who raised their hands.
Right, yeah, yeah, but it's all part of, to me, it's still just a continuation of the discussion.
We just want to make sure everyone's had a chance to say their piece.
Right, yeah, right, because I've sat in the audience plenty of times, so I know both sides of the table.
Sure.
And I've been told, sorry, you can't speak, when some, some news, some new information came available at the meeting. And it's like, whoa, wait a minute, what about that? Um, type of situation. So I'm just saying is you don't formally close until you're ready, someone's ready to make a motion. You know, say, I want to make a motion on this article, and you ask any, any other comments from, from the public before we close. And then you say, okay, we're done. The public is done. We are now board discussion.
Everybody agree with that?
Brad, I agree with that, but I, I think that the as the chair, you need to have some leeway in terms of sensing what's going on.
Yeah.
I trust you did.
And the other, and the other part of it is when you say any other comments from the public?
New comments.
It's any other questions
Okay.
from the public.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to keep getting fifteen people saying, I'm not in favor of this, I'm not in favor of this. We already knew that half hour account.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It needs to be new information.
Mm-hmm. Rob, can you put, um, people back on? I'd like to get Phil and Kate and Linda to weigh in if they have any thoughts.
Kate? Linda's got one.
Um, Linda.
She's good.
Let's go, Linda.
Um. Well, before this all got steamrolling, we were back at, uh, new business. So I have a comment on new business when you get to it.
I think we're still at old business. But now. Okay, Linda, your new business comment.
Um, I wanted to know if, uh, on the planning board fees, if we need to vote on them.
On the fees?
Well, or is it just something that Rob has looked into and that, that's it? Is there discussion and voting or, I mean, I'm fine with them.
I, I think we should have discussion and voting, yes.
Yeah, so if you remember in the email that I sent you last week?
Three of them, three of whom you have highlighted.
Right, yeah, I wanted to change the, uh, uh, per a butter fee to be in line with ZBA charges. They recently updated their.
From five to eight.
Five to eight.
Yeah.
The advertising fee with Valley News, which is the newspaper record.
Right.
We charge fifty-five here, ZBA charges seventy-five, and actually seventy-five is closer to the one we actually have to pay.
Right.
And then the gravel pit permit.
From fifty to two hundred.
Very rare. Yeah, right. But as we saw, the gravel pit permit can be one of the most complex hearings you guys have.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board fee schedule as presented.
Second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Telepos, abstentions, unanimous.
Thank you.
Um, any more new business than anybody? Linda, your hand is up. Linda's hand is still up.
Oh, I didn't mean to.
Didn't lower it.
Okay, Kate.
Um, I just, I realized under my select board report, I was remiss in reminding everybody that sign up for public office started today. So my apologies, but if you want to encourage someone you know or you want to sign up for a public office, uh, it started today and goes through Friday, February third, and the list of offices, very exciting, is on our website.
Kate, uh, I, I meant to ask you during the, your, your report, from the selectman, um, any, any further, um, information about the short-term rental ordinance?
That would be a Rob question here and Ed, we're working on it. I think we have a lot of balls in the air. And I think most of those balls right now are working on financing and our building projects, but Rob, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong.
That's fairly accurate. We haven't, there's not been no further action.
We've got some USDA deadlines, so.
Well.
It's fallen down.
From my personal experience, we need to implement that pretty quickly. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's two or three properties on, uh, my road that are going up for sale and, you know.
Yeah.
You don't want neighbors with the last name LLC.
Exactly.
I don't blame you. Um, all right, under new business, uh, which is actually old business. You folks remember, we did a boundary line adjustment and merger about a month ago. Uh, for.
Lake Street?
Yeah, for Lake Street.
Yeah.
So after we did the decision and I signed the Mylar, uh, the attorney came back with a new Mylar that had an extra note.
Yep.
And the note had to do with an old deed and a paper road that had been laid out, which may or may not be the, um, the cause of the no man's land or the unreported land. Um, and I was asked to sign that and I said, I don't think so. It, um, it's.
Even though it's a small change, it's a change, it's gonna come back.
Exactly, so.
Be legal.
Exactly, so.
They set up a road that went between those two streets that never happened.
But it was, it was, it's a, it's a paper street.
It's still there, yeah.
We don't know that for sure.
Right.
Um, but anyhow, I, I spoke with, um, one of the attorneys, uh, who was it?
Barry Schuster.
Barry Schuster, right. And, um, he was very agreeable to bringing it back, uh, at our second meeting in February. And he would, he's gonna be preparing a packet with all the documents that he could find in his research. And he said in his forty years of practice, this was one of the most challenging and
Confusing.
interesting and
Interesting.
and confusing.
Complex.
Um, legal property things that he's ever had to deal with. So he's gonna come and try to explain it.
Good.
And then we can ask him questions and we can either approve it. We can ask for more information, which may or may not be possible to get, because I, I kind of think that.
You kind of think they don't know.
It's not there. It's, it's, things just aren't recorded. So we will see what happens and, um.
Bring your own martini?
Bring your own martini, absolutely. So I'll, I'll tell that to Barry Schuster as well.
So, well, without seeing the plan, I'm, you have copies yet of this, of what he has?
Um, I have the Mylar, it's not been signed.
It's, it's just an, uh, an additional note. There were three notes and now there's a fourth.
They don't know where the roads, where the paper street is actually physically located on the plans?
Well, I, I have.
That's my question. I have not.
Original, they have the, they, something happened. If I remember.
Yeah.
It, it, all of a sudden it appeared, but they didn't have the deed that went with it or the documentation.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if, if there's a, a note saying a paper street, there has to be a physical location where it was proposed. And is that shown on the plan?
I think there is some information of that from previous surveys. Um, I'm quite sure.
I'm just being curious to what's in.
No, I, I'm quite sure that Rob does not have all of the documentation that the lawyers have.
Can we, hopefully we get all that prior to the meeting?
Yes, uh, that's the plan. That's the plan.
He doesn't show up and say, here you go, leave this.
Well, that's the plan.
And, and, and just the theory of the situation, if I may, um, we have a, a zoning ordinance that we interpret and make decisions about regarding, uh, properties.
Mm-hmm.
And there's probably a point, I'm guessing, where the deed descriptions, any discrepancies and, uh, stuff like that and the, the legal side of this thing are issues amongst the property owners affected that we probably don't wade into very deeply. In other words, if we've applied the zoning ordinance the way it should be, we made a decision about I forgot even what this was about. Was it a lot line adjustment?
Lot line and merger.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, that's a question I'd probably like to ask the attorney is, is what is it we're actually signing? It's not that we agree that this survey is one hundred percent accurate and all these notes are, it's, it's that the lot lines are gonna be in a certain spot. I guess.
It, it's that we approve whatever is on the survey, basically.
For what's presented to us.
And.
Right. If there's something presented that is unfractal, um, or there was an error, un, was unspenosed to us, and it's on them to.
Yeah.
It's not our fault.
It's a civil issue at that point.
Surveyor did a bad survey type of thing. It's not our faults.
Right, right.
He shows a property line here and set, and everything meets setback, but then it turns out the property line really wasn't there and now it doesn't meet setbacks.
Then it's conceivable that 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 error would still be. Could still be perfectly compatible with our decision, it's just that two property owners aren't happy about it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, that 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 could be the case.
Or it could be, yes, to go to the ZBA, because technically, there's a right of way. Going through the middle of this property, making it too small for setbacks or whatever, so you go to the ZBA.
Except we don't know the answers to any of those questions, and maybe the attorney has some more answers?
Yeah, but just sort of like Tim's point, it was, if they came back and says there was a major mistake, and now it doesn't meet zoning, they go to the ZBA.
But we're not at fault.
But, you know, the the whole reason we're doing this is because the title company for one of the. One of the properties apparently is going to be sold, and the title company wanted some information on the Mylar. And, you know, it's new to us, we have to look at it, we have to look at the, at what it says. And we have to ask questions, and we have to be satisfied that the survey as drawn. Doesn't appear to have any inconsistencies. Like, if if this paper street happened to be a paper street that was the town's, you know. I think we gotta look, look after the town's interest. If the paper street was part of the subdivision. Yeah, I mean, there there's, there's all kinds of possibilities, and at this point, I haven't a clue.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, yeah, well, it's a bit like Johnson Drive, where if somebody's. And so so people, they could subdivide and build, build houses on land they didn't even own.
Well, I suspect Barry will have some answers.
Uh he'll have some.
Barry's probably in the, in the Upper Valley, probably the best land use. Attorney.
Yeah, he's good, there's no doubt about it, so. But, you know, when he says, I was challenged by this. It's, oh, it's messed up. So that'll be coming up in a month. Master plan, it is pretty much on the Enfield Leaps website. We had some technical problems getting the interactive version ported over to our website, so at this point. It links to um the Playsets website. And Brandy is on vacation for about three weeks, so it's gonna stay there. I've gotten some preliminary budget information from Brandy. On a zoning rewrite, and I'll be working, looking that over, talking to Rob. Talking to Ed, and starting to work on a grant. From New Hampshire Housing, uh which might fund the zoning rewrite.
Uh, that'd be excellent.
On the phase two of the master plan. Lindsay and I have started some discussions to try to suss out. Exactly how the various boards and committees are gonna fit into the process. We've had one meeting, and we're gonna have another meeting tomorrow, I think. And that's about where that is, anything else from anybody?
Yeah, um that zoning rewrite. There's also, we get zoning ordinance, we get site plan due. An excavation.
And floodway, and gravel pit. And, yeah, there's a bunch.
Of those. What we have to do, we have to rewrite the whole eventually, but. Are they, are they so intertwined that you you kinda have to do the whole?
I don't think so.
Now, zoning ordinance is freestanding, you just have to make sure that the subdivision gets changed for any changes you make on the. On the zoning.
Well, so there's an entertainment there.
They do, right, we've had conflicts. Right. The past, where one said one thing, zoning over, overrules everything else. So that always takes precedence. But there's been times when subdivision or site plan zoning said one thing, and site plan said something else.
Or the definition said something.
Okay, then my my question then is, should we, when we're talking to Brandy about a scope of work, should it include all of them, so?
Uh, it probably should, and in my mind, I'm using zoning rewrite. As kind of a generic term to encompass whatever needs to be rewritten in order to have. No inconsistencies between the zoning, the definitions, the subdivision, and the site plan. And everything else that's.
Yeah, I think it would be, you, it's generally like you were saying, land use regulations, and it will cover pretty much everything.
Do you have a lot of experience with rewriting uh zoning for towns?
I have had no experience.
No, but how about her?
Over, yeah.
Yeah, Brandy has.
Yeah, she's done, uh she gave me two examples of two different towns.
Cause I'm sure there's a format she prefers that's easy to work with, and and, cause I know that when I went through it, it's like, it's pretty crazy, right?
Yeah, and now she is gonna take the lead on the whole thing. And the only reason that that would not happen is if we don't get enough funding.
Right, so does she review and recommend, or do, is it, do we work with her, how does it, how does it?
I don't know how she looks.
Just curious, okay.
But what she did tell me was that on a zoning major, you know, start from the ground up. Um, and especially where you're contemplating.
Changes.
Plucking around with the zoning districts, public involvement was very important.
Again.
And my, my response to that statement was, well, then let's budget for lots of public involvement. Because it worked.
It worked, but it's a ton of work.
It's a, it's a ton of work.
Of work, especially for for you and and Lindsay's last time, when we did the plan, it was a crap load.
Yeah, well, hopefully, you know, we've done it before. And hopefully, once we get our partners from the various boards and commissions. They will be able to do a lot of the public interaction specific to their chapter. But for zoning, that's Holder and Marlowe, and I am very happy to let Brandy.
Tell us how to do it.
Tell us how to do it. And.
Makes sense.
And and take the lead. Anybody else have any questions or comments? We're done with new business, our next meeting is February eighth.
I make a motion, will you adjourn? I just wanna clarify.
Your honor.
I just, I just wanna clarify this time sign for that meeting.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay.
Six thirty, that's the way you guys wanted.
Can you guys see the caption, closed captions?
What?
Can you see closed captions on your screen there?
No.
I I don't have a question, it's more, um, I think we'd better tell Elisa. That we're starting at six thirty in case she gets the message, you know, someone inquiring.
Yep, and we can put that in the town newsletter too, which will be coming out.
James, is it Jim Bonner?
Yes. Yes, the two Jims are both Jim Bonner.
Oh, you did, okay, yeah.
So Dave, are we gonna vote whether we're adjourning?
I thought we all said yes.
As long as nobody interrupts the process, uh we do have a motion on the floor, which has been seconded. All in favor of a journey?
Drive safe, y'all.
Okay, we are adjourned.
The people at home are opposing.
Linda's gonna go out for a walk on the beach, you know, it's seventy degrees, the sun is around.
She's on Florida time.
Pina coladas all the way around.
All right.
Hey, bye.
I told you we'd be less than two hours.